... 2008 Planning Commission Meeting to order. We are ready to begin the meeting. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Chair Glines.
Present.
Vice Chair Troubridge.
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Steinman.
Present.
Commissioner Dunham.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call to your attention the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so that we can have a very smooth meeting. Thank you. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion of the minutes. There actually are three sets of minutes for April 10th, April 24th, and May 8th of 2008. I do show some extensions on the minutes. Commissioner Evans from the 410 meeting, myself on the April 24th meeting, and Commissioner Dunham on the May 8th meeting. May I have a motion for approval on that?
Make a motion for approval of the minutes as stated.
Motion on the floor, please cast your votes. And that motion has passed. We'll move on to our housekeeping items.
Mr. Chairman, we have a group of items requested for action. Items 19 and 20, request by the applicant to obey those items till the 6/26 Planning Commission meeting. Items 25, 26, and 27, request by the applicant to withdraw those items without prejudice. And item number 35, request by the applicant to hold that item till the July 10 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion on the housekeeping items? Are there any items that anybody would like to have pulled at this time? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to withhold the items as requested and mentioned by staff in the record.
Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote.
Commissioner Dunham, would you like your vote to reflect a yes?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that motion has passed. We'll move on to, there are no consent items, so we'll move on to our one motion, one vote. The following items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine non-public and public hearing items. All public hearing items and non-public hearing items will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Okay? Yes. One motion, one vote, items 6 through 13, and we will read these in. Item 6, SDR 27593, applicant owner, Rouse Grocery Company, for a proposed 14,383 square foot addition with an exterior modifications to an existing general retail store at the northeast corner of Bonanza Road in Pecos. Item 7, SUP 27742, applicant owner, Chipotle Mexican Grill, Inc., owner NP hyphen I and G, Montecito Marketplace Phase 1 LLC, for a proposed restaurant with a service bar within an existing restaurant at 7120 North Durango Drive, Suite 150. Item 8, SUP 27897, applicant Clearwire US LLC, owner City of North Las Vegas, for the proposed co-location of antennas on an existing 160-foot wireless communication facility, non-stealth design, at 5912 La Concha Drive. Item 9, SDR 27793, applicant owner, corporation of the presiding bishop of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, a Utah corporation sold, for a recreation area addition to an existing church house of worship at 8525 Tom Boulevard. Item 10, SDR 27842, owner, applicant Las Vegas Valley Water District, for 675 square foot utility installation at 2215 North Buffalo Drive. Item 11, SDR 27850, applicant owner, Jim Takata, for a two-bedroom unit addition to an existing duplex with a waiver to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer on the north property line where five feet is required at 628 North Ninth Street. Item 12, SDR 72898, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for a proposed 472 square foot community recreational facility, public at 100 South Rampart Boulevard. Item 13, SDR 2790, applicant owner, DI Properties, for a major amendment to an approved site development review, SDR 3372, for a proposed 3,264 square foot restaurant with drive-thru at 3040 East Bonanza Road. Those are our one motion, one vote. These are open for public hearings. Would anybody like to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments and questions on one motion, one vote? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of items number 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13, subject to all staff conditions.
There is a motion on the floor for approval, please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
All matters go forward to the council on July 16.
We're going to move to our public hearing items. I'm going to move items 36 and 37 forward. We're going to take item 36 first. Vacation 27906, applicant owner, Clark County, to vacate Rose Street, south of Goldring Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, staff recommends approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Applicant?
Yes, my name's Tom Barnes with Stanley Consultants, representing-
Can you press that button right there and turn that mic on? Thank you.
Yes, my name's Tom Barnes with Stanley Consultants, representing Clark County Department of Real Property. We don't have any objections to the staff comments, so we recommend approval-
You're in agreement with all conditions and recommendations?
Yes.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions by the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item 36.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approvals on item 36.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Reason they moved forward, they were Laker fans, if that's a hint. Thank you. Item 37, VAC 27995, applicant owner, 220 North Fourth Street LV LLC, and Black Man Alfred and I Family Trust et al., to vacate a public sewer easement generally located at the northwest corner of Ogden Avenue and Fourth Street.
Mr. Chairman, staff is recommending approval of this application.
Is there an applicant present? Seeing no applicant. Mr. Attorney, we can go ahead and move forward, correct?
Commissioner, this probably should have been on the consent agenda anyway, so I think that's why we moved up number 36 and 37, so you're able to vote on these.
So, it's a public hearing. Anybody speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments from the board?
Seeing no comments, I'm ready to make a motion on item number 37. Vacation 27995, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Both of those matters go forward to the council on July 16.
Back to our public hearing item at the beginning of the agenda. Item 14, 15, and 16 are related items. Item 14, GPA 27309, applicant owner, Emerald Lake, Inc., et al., to amend a portion of the southeast sector plan of the general plan from MLA Medium Density Residential to SC Service Commercial on the south side of Lake Mead Boulevard, approximately 175 feet east of Martin Luther King Boulevard. Item 15, ZON 27311, request from R2 Medium Low Density Residential to C1 Limited Commercial. Item 16, SDR 27314, for a proposed 17,620 square foot retail development, including a 2,000 square foot medical office with a waiver to allow a 3.5-foot perimeter landscape buffer along a portion of the north property line where a 15-foot landscape buffer is required. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed amendment to the general plan to service commercial is appropriate for the subject's site, as it will facilitate the goals of the West Las Vegas Plan for compatible commercial infill development. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the general plan amendment and associated rezoning application. Furthermore, staff is recommending approval of the associated site development plan review, as the site redesign was redesigned for better site circulation, as well as the buildings have been reoriented to the front of the parcel, creating a strong street edge and lessening the impact on the residences to the north. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Applicant?
Yeah, my name is Lynn Affleck, 4987 Idaho Avenue. I was here before, and you stated that you'd like to see better circulation. We met with staff. We actually come up with three designs. I don't know if I should take the time to show you, but just to let you know, we have, we went through-
Well, let us see what we're going to get.
Okay. We went through three scenarios, and out of the three, we created a fourth. So, that's what I wanted you to know, that we've actually done quite a bit of homework, trying to relocate this to satisfy the requirements. And we believe we got a good product now. So, we have, as you say, the Lake Mead Boulevard is here, and the front of the buildings are both close to the Lake Mead Boulevard. The parking is separating the residential from the buildings. And we have the circulation straight through. Now, there's no, there's a gate right here, a crash gate-
Crash gate.
Yeah, to prevent, until the fire department needs it, there's actually no access there on the residential street. And we've increased the planter size. The planter size on this side has been, it is all the way to the full requirement. On this side, we're a little bit, two feet short, so we still need a bit of a waiver there on the right-hand side. But that was just to be able to get the other planters the proper widths and so forth. But we got it all fit in, and I think it's a pretty good product. And the owner here has made an effort to meet with neighbors, anybody who has any concerns, and so we've tried to meet any concerns that anybody has.
Very good. I'm familiar with this, as you know, I've met with you several times on this.
Yeah.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this project? Please come to the podium.
I'm standing here.
Please state your name.
Beatrice Turner, West Las Vegas. This right here, where they're going to turn in, right here, is this going to be wide enough for you to go in and come out?
Yes, ma'am. I think that has met all of public works. We'll speak to BART. I think it's met all of their requirements.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay, and right here in the back, he said he's going to put up a brick wall right there. And he has the designs on how the back of the building going to look.
Okay.
Brick wall, when I met with him, I told him we would like a brick wall with some decorative wrought iron in there. He agreed on that.
Let me ask the applicant, we'll get an answer to your question. Do you have elevation of your rear fence, or can you describe of how it's going to look?
Well, excuse me, this is meant to be a representation of the fence itself. We have, so far, now, I wasn't at the meeting that she was talking about, so I don't know of that agreement. But right now, we have split-faced block with contrasting, two courses of contrasting, and it's colored block. It's not the regular gray block.
So, there's no wrought iron?
Not yet. If you require it, we'll-
Well, let's just-
We'll-
Just ask her a question.
Sure.
Did you want to know, was there wrought iron?
So, far, no.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. When I met with him, and he called me, and I went to his, he said, yes, I agreed to a decorative wrought iron fence with the brick wall in the back. That those was his words, and I'd not like nobody to stand here and call me no lie.
No, she's actually representing the truth. I said, that's what the neighbors want, who add a decorative iron fence in addition to the wall.
We'll let them speak, and then we'll give you a chance to rebut all of that stuff.
And my next question, I want to know what kind of roof's going to be on this building? Is it going to be a tile roof?
Yes, it is a tile roof. Most of the roof actually won't show. We have one part of the building where the roof does show, and it will be tile, but the other part actually has facade up, come past the roof.
There's a-
And my last question, is this going to be a medical building, medical facility over here? Because when I met with him, he said, well, you know, we can move in a beauty shop or barber shop. I said, no, you ain't going to bring that swap meat stuff to my community. Let it be a medical facility, where you bring in somebody to do glasses or medical insurance, not no beauty shop, not no barber shop, not no swap meat. And he agreed to that. Am I right?
Would you like to explain the uses, which will be in the shopping center? By the way, could you please put your name and address on the record as well?
Sure. My name is Marcel Isok, 9235 Hekem Avenue, Las Vegas. Over here to the right is the medical component. It's going to have a pharmacy at the bottom and a medical doctor's office on top of it. And to my left, over here, it's 1,500 square, 1,500 square foot of retail building. Right now, we don't have the exact nature of the businesses that are going in there. And like we stated before, we've taken into consideration the concerns of the neighbors. We're not going to have any gambling business, alcohol, or loan business. And that's as far as I know right now, but what exactly is going to go in here, I do not know at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Come on now, he coming to our community, he's going to build this new building, and he's going to be here. He's going to have the doctor's off-
Does anybody else want to get to speak?
Yeah, when I'm done, when I'm done, when I'm done.
Excuse me, I'll determine how much time people have to take.
Oh, thank you.
Continue, Ms. Turner.
Since he going to be here and upstairs, he's going to have the doctor's office up there. That's fine, and I accept that. But you know, when he met with me, we met about the brick wall and the designs on the back, but right here, where he don't know what's going to go in there, no, you're not going to bring no anything into our community. You're not going to bring no barber shop, no beauty shop, and why would you put that there? And it's all supposed to be a medical facility? That's what it need to stay being.
Well, Ms. Turner, I think it is a retail shopping little plaza, and it has multiple use it in. It's just not one plaza that has to say, there's a doctor's office here, and then all along these little 1,500 square foot retail spaces, they have to be medically oriented businesses.
He agreed to, that he was going to find a doctor to go in there. He agreed to that. He agreed to finding somebody to even buy medical insurance.
Yes, but what he asked to do is go out and seek that type of business-
Yes, he need to seek that. Not a barber shop, not a beauty shop, and not a swap meat.
Thank you very much. Haven't seen you in a while, too, but you're still feisty as it comes. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Eddie Watson, 1624 J Street. She's not the only one living in the area. I live not 2/4 from there, a lot closer than she does. I have no problem with the building, the way it is. I know the man personally. He's a man of his word. He bringin' quality stuff. Now, here's a number of things. This is the first person that have come into our community and actually wants to put a business there. Everybody else wants to put something on the outage or somewhere else, or we come in, we got to give them a big tax break, or we got to give them a piece of land, we got to beg them to come in. Now, here is a person that wants to take his business and move it into the heart of our city. And I'm very much in favor of that. And I'll bring as many people in here that you move in our support.
Thank you very much. Next. Can I ask the applicant, there are two microphones. Would you mind stepping aside, and we can get both people at both microphones? You'll have a chance to rebut. Young lady? Please come on up. Thank you. Mr. McGowan?
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. As in many other instances, there are awful lot of questions that arise with regard to this item, among others. And if you don't mind, I'll ask them. You need not respond. If you do, you'll respond to the public record. I hope you do respond in the public interest. How many foreign nationals of the medical profession are involved in this particular project, if you know? Second question. What kind of medical offices, what practices? Will they be ambulatory surgery clinics, or what? Third question. If they are medical offices of any clinical type, what assurance will there be of the hygienic nature of the procedures? And I mean that in all seriousness. If I don't find it out, I can discuss it with the Health District and the State Legislative Committee on Healthcare, if you choose, it's up to you. I'm asking you, because you are key and crucial to this planning process, and it's very important that you ask all of the questions that are pertinent to these issues. Now, and final question, I swear to God, the applicant mentioned that they did their homework. Which members of the public that are interested and affected in this area, did they do their homework with? Which publics were at that meeting? Anybody know?
Beatrice Turner.
Only one person. I think there are more than one that live there that are affected by it.
You'll have a chance to respond. It's just, we're not going to go back and forth, back and forth. We'll be here all night. We're going to let them make their comments, and we will close the public hearing, which means nobody else will be able to speak, and then we'll let you, the applicant, rebut everything that's been said. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
I'm Louise Sanders, and I worked in the community 25 long years, and I know about the community, and I know where the drugstore is now. It's a very small place, and I get my medicine there. I have deal with them for seven or eight years. And I like the things that he's trying to move on and get a bigger building, and that will be fine. And I live in the community, and I've been there 30 years, and we haven't had nothing hardly over there. The grocery stores move in, and I, well, I see why, but I won't stay now. But I hope the drugstore stays, because we need it. We need it very bad.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm 76 years old, and I hate to drive to the other side of town, and I live on this side. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Fay Wilkinson, and I'm here to speak upon the drugstore. We need that drugstore there. We need it for the community. We need it for, I mean, it's the closest one that, I mean, we use, because these people, they treat you like family. And the other drugstores that we were going to, they wasn't like this. And when my sister told me about this drugstore, I've been with them for many a years, and I really appreciate what they trying to do for the community. And it ain't about no roof or whatever she talking about. It's about a building, helping the community, helping us. We need that.
Thank you very much. I hear you loud and clear. You didn't even blink.
Thank you. Y'all have a blessed day.
You, too.
My name is Carol Rawl. I've been a customer of Emerald Pharmacy for six or seven years. The projective area where he's going to be, there's no medical buildings there at all. We have to go as far as UMC to a medical facility, so I think that's a great idea. As far as the retail, there is retail all up and down Lake Mead, but there's no one in it. And I'm sure if he builds this retail, someone will occupy it, and it will benefit the community. The pharmacists have treated us with very quality and professional services. Also, they have equipment, and that's also needed in that area, because you have four or five senior complexes on Martin Luther King, Lake Mead, you have Lake Tonapah, you have Whispering Palms, and you also have Louise Rochelle. And those three facilities can benefit from this services being closer to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak? How you doing today, sir?
My name is Leslie Rawl. I've been going to Emerald for at least 10 years, and like the lady said, they're family-oriented. When you walk into their place, they know who you are. They can call your name out. They put something in the community that the bigger drugstores don't. They don't know you by name. They don't even want to know you by name. They making an effort to serve your needs. They go out of their way to see that you get what you need. If it's call your doctor, call your insurance company, they make you family. They make you feel like you somebody when you walk in their place. Far as the area go, the area needs it. It needs more than a CVS in the area. Like I said, you need somebody that you can go to and rely on them helping you. You can walk in a CVS, and they say, oh, we don't have this.
Debit or credit.
You know?
They know you as debit or credit.
There you go.
There you go.
You know? Far as other businesses on this side of the property she talking about?
Yes, sir.
I'd rather see it filled with business than see it empty with nothing. The neighborhood can use something is better than nothing. Now, if it's a barber shop, fine. All barber shops ain't bad business. It's what you let into that business, that area of element to that business. But if you got a reputable business going on in that other section, fill the building. That's my motto. Fill the building with somebody reputable. If they not, you can always get rid of them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Gloria Banks, and I love Emory. I love his wife. I think they're the most beautiful people in the world. They look after you. They don't, I'm a hard patient, and they make sure my medicine is on time. They will deliver, and I love that. And they look after us. They take care of us. If my medicine is due and I haven't called it in, they make sure I get it. And what's wrong with putting a pharmacy? You know, we need this.
Keep your comments up this way.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just had to look back, too.
Hold on. What's behind you, you can't worry about. Just worry about what's in front.
Worry about-
That's in the past.
Okay. But I love them. I think they're the most beautiful people in the world, and I love the idea. I'm for it all the way. I just hope you guys be for it.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll ask the applicants to come back up and answer a few questions. Number one was, can you tell us about the medical office and what type it'll be, if it'll be, because I think he's going down the road of these endoscopy center, and how are you going to ensure the quality of your tenant in there and the health that they provide?
Okay. It's going to be a pharmacy on the ground floor-
Okay.
-and a doctor's office on top of it. It's going to be a primary care. It's going to be very, very top quality. Two good friends of mine constantly negotiating about setting up their offices there. It's either going to be a primary OB-GYN, or it could just be primary care only, as we stand.
Okay. You wanted to make some comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I met with Ms. Beatrice Turner. I really love her passion. Keep it up for the community, and I mean that in the strictest of senses. I do not mean in any negative sense, any negative sense. I really appreciate that. Ms. Beatrice, I'm going to use this opportunity to assure you that-
Sir, keep your comments towards us. She can hear you.
We are trying to put prime product in this area. We're not looking for public money. It's all private money, and it's going to be a reputable business. We are going to seek out as good a business as we can find to complement what's already in the community. I'm from the community. I live in the community. I work in the community. My kids go to school. I do a little center. Believe me, I'll be the last person to try to put anything in this community to harm anybody, if anything is going to harm me first. So, we are going to find the best businesses we're going to find, and we're going to work in conjunction with Ms. Turner to find the best businesses that will suit the environment.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Affleck, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, just reinforce what he just said.
Yeah, just reinforce what he just said. He is an owner-occupant. I mean, he is going to occupy this site, and he of all people would want to see the site be used properly and kept up properly.
Thank you very much.
And I will answer any other technical questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by the board on this item? Mr. Truesdale?
Couple of questions. Explain, and it has nothing to do with this, I'm just curious. The pharmacy that you operate, what, I mean, you've got a lot of people that are talking very nice about it, and I appreciate that, but what distinguishes it different? Because it's two thousand feet roughly, or smaller space. I'm trying to understand the pharmacy.
Well, the pharmacy, we're an independent pharmacy as opposed to a chain pharmacy, which would be like the Walmart, or CVS, or Walgreens. And just like one of the people mentioned earlier, you walk through the door, a good ninety percent of the people that walk through our doors, we know. I know, and personally, I can greet a man or their children. I've been working the business long enough to see grandchildren or small children become, you know, school age. We know, and we deliver to their homes. We go into these homes, we do our medical equipment. They're like family. I see them on the street, I greet them. They see me on the street, I greet them. They have a problem, there's bereavement, we're involved. There's childbirth, we're involved. So name it. We just don't take the money and run. We live in this community. We go to school in this community, or my children do, and we are active members of the community. They're not, they're just not numbers. They are people when they come through our door. And it's that personal involvement that really distinguishes our business from every other multi-chain business.
Good. I appreciate that. Mr. Affleck?
Yeah.
With regards to the, I appreciate your, the work in moving the buildings around from what we looked at previously.
Right.
Question I've got is circulation. If any one of these rows of parking are filled, you've got, really looking at people backing up a great distance. What would it do to the site plan to create circulating traffic aisles? Like, is that a shortage of parking, or we would have a little less building?
Yeah. Well, the point of it is to get all of the parking that we need on a per-square-foot basis, you'd almost have to eliminate the smaller building, maybe. You know, I don't know. That's why we went through these different scenarios before. There's one where we were circulating all the way around the building. We had a way for people to get out. We moved the building so that we could do that. Fire department didn't like it. And we had another plan similar. That's similar to the plan that we're looking at, except the building is moved more close to the street. Here again, we put the building on this one. We put the building so that there was no parking in the rear at all, and so we had all of the circulation in the front. But again, fire department didn't like that plan either. And so we've, out of the three plans, we combined them all and come up with the best solution. And basically, I don't know if you've had much dealings with Ozzy, but he's a hard nut to crack. And if he agrees with something, I have the wherewithal in me that says, well, I better go with it. And so he definitely approved of this plan, and traffic, the traffic people didn't have any problems with it. So that's how we developed that. But if we were, if we were to create, like, for example, drive-through here, a way to get back out here, then you're gonna destroy some parking spaces. If you're gonna make a drive-through here, you're gonna destroy parking spaces. If you're gonna drive-through here, you're gonna destroy parking spaces. So it becomes a point of how do we, how do we have a building then, if we can't make the parking? We've got exactly, I mean, two of the parking space, the number of parking spaces we need with the number of planters we need for these buildings. And we haven't really occupied the site with the total square footage that we could've, I mean, by the code.
Well, I mean, code providing, there's several levels of the code.
Yeah, we reduced the square footage, though, I mean, you know, to accommodate the parking.
And I just wanna reiterate, I like the way the buildings moved around, but I still, I believe you've got too much building on this site, because every parking field is a dead-end parking field. Every one of them. There's no circulation, for no way, and I look at, you know, the people that spoke so eloquently in support of the pharmacy. There's seniors, there's people that will be coming to the pharmacy, coming to the doctor's office that have medical issues, that negotiating a parking lot for a medical building and a retail building is, the most important part is being able to circulate, let people get to the parking. It becomes a very frustrating thing. It becomes an unsafe thing. So I appreciate what you're trying to come...
Well, it would be, it would be, it would be very easy for me to knock out a bit of planter and put a drive-through. We can do that. It's just that if there could be, if there could be some kind of a way of saying, well, okay, can we still have a building? I mean, if you cut the building down in half or whatever, just to do that, I don't know. It's kind of a balancing act, if you will. We're not trying to make a bad product in any stretch of the imagination. We're trying to have a good product, but we find ourselves locked into code requirements and so forth as well.
And that's really the parameters we need to, I'm looking at, is, one, from a good planning perspective, does this site plan work? And when you're talking about in a medical building with patients coming to see a doctor, patients coming to pick up prescriptions, I think this is the one type of use, or a specific type of use, that having multiple dead-end parking fields where people could easily just wind up in dead-end, be winding up backing up as somebody else is pulling in. I don't think that is the design standards that, one, the commercial design standards that the city puts forward, that isn't within that. And I think you're just looking at too much building with its parking requirements on the site and not providing for what is a good circulation. And I, like I say, I really think you put the buildings around. You've answered the questions.
Well, we can, we can, if you want to stipulate that we provide a particular drive-through, I would like to stick with this plan as a base, if you would. But if I need to, if I need to provide access somewhere through here...
Go back where you were pointing your pen, that those first three spaces? What if you gave up?
Right here.
What if you gave up those three, so you could pull in there and make an immediate left?
Sure.
We actually had a spot here, but the planning didn't like that, so they had us close there.
That's true. I forgot that.
We also proposed to open this spot here to ease flow of traffic, and they didn't want that either. So we tried to come up with plans, but we have to, if fire says no, can't do.
Well, that wasn't fire, but really, whatever this committee says, that's what we'll do. I mean, you know, if we can stay, if we could just stick with this same basic plan, though, and not try to generate a whole new world, just make this plan work.
I understand. I'm not asking you to change your plan, or...
Okay.
I'm telling you the problems I have with the plan.
Okay.
And the problems are circulation. And if, two, three, four, five, six, six to eight parking spaces had to be given up to have this property circulate like any proper medical building, I don't wanna, I can't sit here and say, that's great, let's approve it, let's don't change anything, because I'm not sure if there's, there would be a waiver there. That's why I think we have, I think your problems are created by there's more space than can circulate on the property, when you have proper backing distances, turning radiuses, all the things that make, we live by our cars in this community, and even at five-dollar gas, we'll still be living by our cars, unfortunately. But the, if people are backing out of that first row and somebody's coming in between those buildings, there will be a serious problem on site, and you're talking about people that are coming from a doctor or going to a doctor to get a prescription filled. These are not people that are always one-hundred percent thinking, you know, like they would any other day of the week. So I really, I'm trying to make this a safe product...
That's fine.
And help the project be successful and be safe.
Commissioner, if I may add, if we can get a waiver, we can create a circulation right here, and that would ease any turning problems around here.
Yeah, we're open, we're open to, if we can get a waiver, we can...
Well, I think Commissioner's just telling you what his concerns are. So that's, he's said his say-so, so we have another commissioner that wants to speak, and we'll hear from Mr. Evans, and then we'll all vote on it.
Sure.
I want to speak.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have a question for Public Works, because the staff, if I'm not mistaken, is recommending approval of these items. Is Public Works, do you have any concerns about the circulation in the site itself? Because I know that this has gone back and forth, and from what I'm told, this is a much better design than what was originally proposed. Can I get your opinion, please?
I would agree that this is a much better design than the original proposal. I would also agree with all of the points that Commissioner Truesdale has raised. Those are all valid points. Technically, any on-site circulation problems that would occur would not impact the public right-of-way. So from a technical standpoint, Public Works does not have any problems with what they're proposing. The driveway is adequate width, and the throat depth is adequate. But certainly, all of the points that Commissioner Truesdale has raised would improve the on-site circulation.
If I may, just to bring one point up, that my understanding is to rank in that there were different meetings held. But of course, if the, if it is, the applicants wish to maximize square footage, which of course it usually is, and therefore have to maximize the parking in order to allow the greater amount of square footage, then what suffers is the internal circulation. Since the code does not speak specifically to, for instance, the number of stalls, nor does it require a separate turnaround area, staff can make recommendations, but of course, those recommendations require a reduction in the square footage that comes before you, and that is at the applicant's discretion, if they choose to follow those recommendations or not.
I, thank you. I understand that. I just, I'm not sure it's perfect, and I would probably agree with Commissioner Truesdale on some items. But in all candor, I think I take a different view of this particular site as I would in Summerlin or something. I question whether or not we have the same car usage in this community as you would in other communities. A number of the people that came to speak are elderly. I don't know whether they use the bus or cat services, paratransit. But I'm almost of the opinion that this part of our community really needs the development.
Right.
And with all due respect to Ms. Turner, because I do understand her concerns, and I don't know how we can protect, protect those who are concerned about potential uses, she mentioned a swap meet or something of that nature. I'm assuming if there were intense uses on the retail portions, that that would create additional problems, and I would hope that the applicant could look at those uses when you determine what tenants would be in the retail portion of it. But I, in principle, I'm really in support of this, given all the, you know, the work that's been done on it, and would be open to other suggestions, but I think this area needs development.
Could I ask a question?
You'd have to ask the chairman, because you just keep going back and forth.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Affleck?
The, I don't know how these things are enforced. I know that I prepare a site plan, but in preparing the site plan, I noticed that if I was going to have a restaurant in here, that it would require a whole lot more parking. And so, so in this case, we could say, okay, restaurants are not allowed, you might say. And we get the thing passed here in front of this board, and then in front of the city council. Well, how, how do we know that there's not going to be a restaurant in the future? You know, how is that enforced? I don't know.
Business license, and they have to apply for a special use permit.
So if, so if we, if we make our calculation based on the uses that we see in the code and so forth, and we have the proper number of parking spaces, then those, that analysis will follow through in the business license arena, then?
Well, it all has to, it has to meet their requirements.
Sir, I gotta, if you don't mind...
Go ahead.
You're talking yourself out of my vote, because I, I'm asking about, you know, potential uses, and you're telling me you don't know what you're gonna put in there. So that gives me some pause.
Mr. Chairman, sorry if I may address one more time. We are going to do a very quality product. I have no intention of bringing a swap meet in this neighborhood. It's very, very, it doesn't even figure. I have no intention of doing a restaurant. We have no intention of doing alcohol, loan, or gambling. I have nothing against it, but personally, it will not happen here, as far as I remain the owner.
Thank you. Commissioner Stein?
Yeah. I see the real need for this to get accomplished, and I, there's two things we can do. You can cut a thousand to fifteen hundred square feet off the West Building, and you could get the requirement for the parking, and you could take out enough to have your turn-throughs. Or this body, or somebody else could give you a waiver of a few spots so that you could do it. But I think, no matter what happens, we need to turn. We have to do it in this lot. So it's either, let's knock off some square footage and lower the requirement for parking, take out six or eight spaces, and do the job.
We can do that. We can take off a thousand square feet. We can do that.
That's very agreeable. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I don't know how you want to do this, see if it helps.
That's why I'm confirming with Director Wheeler to see if, I don't want to redesign this whole...
It looks to me like it's a thousand square feet for every six spaces, or thereabouts.
But I don't want to redesign the whole building here at the podium, so...
I understand.
Director Wheeler, can you give us some guidance on it?
If I may, I believe what you're saying is that you want internal access from the westernmost drive aisle to the center drive aisle, and then you want access from the...
Actually, you want access from the east side. That's the worst part.
Excuse me, if I could, this is gonna be a brand-new site plan. So in order to do what you want to accomplish, you're gonna have to either hold it and then have them apply for the waiver or variance, whichever would require, and then have them come back with a brand-new site plan, because the site plan that's agendaed is the one that's displayed currently. And so if you're gonna try to make that site circulation, you need to hold it and bring it back, and have them make those changes with planning, or vote on this particular site plan.
Right. Okay. That's what I thought.
And if they're willing to do that, depending on the time that they turn it around, it could be done within two weeks if they got a site plan to us, like, within a couple of days, but they probably would not be able to do that, so it would be thirty days.
Let me, before we ask the applicant, let me go to Vice Chairman Trobridge.
I would just like to comment before motion is made to go any direction, that I'm very supportive of the project. I think that you have a business plan and a customer base of support that is to be envied by just about any business in town. I would hope that you'd like to open another facility out in my neighborhood, if you're able to offer some kind of service. The types of businesses that are allowed in the facility are really dictated by it being serviced commercial. I think that the comments made by the people on the record will stay on the record so that they wouldn't have to come back down again and say the same things. My only concerns with the, with the project are simply that of the circulation patterns in the parking lot. And I realize that the square footage that's required to have a successful business are significant, and I, for one, would probably be much more willing to entertain a request for a waiver of the parking requirements in order to encourage the development of these types of businesses in the neighborhood that needs it so dearly. Hopefully, with the preponderance of potential customers right across the street, you'd have a lot of walk-in customers, and that would eliminate some of the need for the parking spaces. You know, the concern that remains would be creating a hazardous situation where people would try to jaywalk and... would try to jaywalk and run across the street. And so that, that does come into play somehow, but I'm supportive of your project, just work on the parking lot a little bit.
Thank you, sir.
So after like two weeks, you think you can get it done?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, we'd have to have it tomorrow.
Tomorrow? No problem. We'll have it tomorrow. No problem. We'll have it tomorrow. Yeah, we'll have it. It wouldn't take me but a minute to, to break these, these planters and erase some parking stalls.
And reduce the size of the building.
Well, yeah. And, yeah, we can slug and do that. We can do that.
We'll have it tomorrow.
I need, I need that by 10:00 a.m.
Mr. Chairman.
Our chairman, I want you to be submitted by 10:00 a.m.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, before, before we take any action.
One moment, please. Mr. Evans?
Just thank you. Before we take any action, I, I would hope that the public who came out to speak this evening will recognize that any comments that you made on the record will retain, will be kept on the record and unless people wanted to come out and restate what they've already stated, I, I just hate people that have to come back again and again and again. And, and I want, perhaps, Mr. Chairman, you can let everybody know that those comments we take into consideration and they won't be forgotten by me anyway.
Very good. Here's what I think we can do. We can vote on the GPA tonight. We can vote on the zoning. We can get an opinion on that. We can actually ask the applicant because he said he can get that to the Development Department tomorrow. If he does that, then through you, Ms. Wheeler, that puts him on, on the meeting in about two weeks. Is that correct?
If he can get us a revised site plan showing the reduction in parking and the reduction in the square footage of the building by.
And you think he'll have it tomorrow?
Yes.
Very good. Now Commissioner Quinn, and then we're going to come back and.
Now, does that include the colored?
That includes everything.
That includes everything? Okay. All right.
Thank you. You're just going to be up all night. Commissioner Quinn?
Just briefly, I want to, I want to make sure that you understand that the parking changes does not include getting rid of any of the handicap parking because of doctors' offices and pharmacy. In my opinion, I know you meet the standards and I know you meet the codes, but to me, one or two more would be nice. So I will never support a project with less.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
So you're going to get this done tonight, have it tomorrow. We're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion on, on item 16 SDR, is to hold that for two weeks.
Okay.
But I am going to go ahead and ask for a motion on item 14, which is the GPA 27309.
I'll do that.
If no other commissioners have any questions or comments.
No, I'll make a motion for you.
Thank you.
On agenda number 14, GPA 27309, move for approval, subject condition.
Move for approval on item 14, please cast your votes.
14.
And that motion has passed.
Item number 15, ZON 27311, move for approval, subject conditions.
Please cast your vote. Please hold your applause until I get a score on the Laker game. I mean, till the end of the vote. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Agenda item number 16, I'll move for bans to June 26.
Motion on the floor on item 16 to obey until the June 26 meeting. Please cast your vote. That motion has passed. And again, as Commissioner Evans said, we do take seriously your, your public comments. We are glad that you did come down here. However, I don't see many folks from my ward down here often, so I'll see you guys back again on the 26th of June, okay?
And the general plan amendment and rezoning will go on to the city council's August 6 meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just so there's notice of understanding with the applicant, the planted director was reiterated the fact that with the reduction in parking, they have to reduce the size of the building. Otherwise, they have to come and apply for a waiver, and I hope they know that.
You hear that, Mr. Affleck?
I'm sorry.
Let's come back up to the podium.
With the reduction in the parking, you're going to have to reduce the size of the building. Otherwise, you're going to have to come forward with a waiver for the parking.
A variance, and that would start the process all over again.
Okay, so we're choosing to reduce the building to meet the parking.
That is correct.
The main, the main building.
Yeah, so you've got two.
We'll keep the pharmacy the same size and the doctor's office the same size. We'll just reduce the commercial retail. Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify. I am in support of this project. I voted no because I think the zoning has a potential impact on your site planning questions, and that's, I think those two items should have gone together, but I do support your project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 17 and 18 are related items. Item 17, variance 27929, applicant owner Apostolic Assembly of Faith in Christ Jesus to allow 29 parking spaces where 32 are required and to allow 13 compact parking spaces where eight spaces are the maximum allowed for a proposed church at 218 North 15th Street. Related item SDR 26818, applicant owner Apostolic Assembly of the Faith in Jesus Christ Church Inc. for a proposed 1,056-square-foot addition to an existing 4,161-square-foot commercial building with a waiver to allow a five-foot-wide landscape buffer on the east perimeter and a zero-foot landscape busper on the south perimeter where eight feet is required for a proposed church. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the requested parking variance and the requested landscape waivers indicate that this site is being overbuilt and staff is recommending denial.
Applicant?
Good afternoon. My name is Sergio Roman, and I'm a 2743 municipal court in Las Vegas, and I'm a member of the Apostolic Assembly, and we are trying to accommodate this building for the purpose of, you know, having our assemblies and our services there. And we applied for a variance on the parking requirements from the city, being that the addition that is going into the building is for restrooms and for both, and the pastor's office. So I don't know if that's, enters in the consideration of the, of the size, of the total size of the building for the requirements of the parking. And as you can see, well, yeah, on the top part of the, of the floor plan right there, the addition to the building, to the existing building is only for amenities, for the restrooms and for the pastor's office. And we're looking at, I think it's about 1,000 and some feet addition to it, so I don't know if that's where you guys are requiring. We're not, we're not increasing the, the place of assembly. We're increasing just for, for the restrooms to the place.
Thank you very much. You finished?
Yes.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward. Mr. McGowan?
Thank you, Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident and candidate for election to the Clark County Commission, District D. I, I get the impression that the applicant gave a very good description of the reason for the item, and I don't see anything that would be perplexing about that. It's actually seemed to be an advantage or an improvement on the property in general. So on that basis, I would recommend you approve the item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board?
Just a quick comment for the applicant. Are there, is on-street parking allowed on 15th Street to your west?
Perme?
Is there on-street parking on 15th Street to your west?
On, on the west of the building?
On the west of the building. Is there, is there parking allowed on 15th Street?
Yeah, there's. I believe there is from the point where, from the corner.
To the entrance.
The building is sitting on half of the block pretty much. So I believe there's on, on the, on the, on the west side will be, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Evans?
If I might ask the staff and/or the applicant, you're seeking a, I believe, a waiver to the landscape standards for, I think it's zero landscaping on the south side where I think that we require some trees. Can you explain that to me? Is it the nature of the building or is there a reason why?
Yeah, the reason, I'm sorry. The reason to, for the request of the, on the zero landscaping on the other side is for us to, to accommodate the parking, which is, will be on, on the side of the building we're, we're facing on the, on the monitor right now, where the handicap is at. That's where the two handicaps is going to be and the rest of the parking on that side. And the reason for us to, a zero landscape on this side of, on that wall is for us to have enough space to comply with the requirements of the.
For the backup of the cars.
Yeah, or the driveway on the building, and to be able to park the cars on that side of, the west side of the building.
I see in the if-approved conditions, it says item number seven, exception to Title 19, would be, would be approved to allow the zero trees on the south property line where seven are required. Can maybe someone from the staff, is there a way that we can get some landscaping or is there a justification for eliminating it on that side of the property line? Because basically what I'm trying to do, I'm in support of the project in general, and I think the parking variance is relatively minor, but if, and I'd like to see development in that area, but oftentimes I think we give short shrift to the landscaping issues and, you know, I'd like to look at what this building will look like in 15 or 20 years, not just next month.
If I may, there is sufficient landscaping on the north and on the west, which are the primary frontages, street frontages. The site where they're lacking the zero trees that you're referring to is the south, and there's a large planter to the west and the midpoint and the east point of that southern property line, but what it lacks is the trees along the property line.
Is there any way that we can provide a tree scape along either 15th or the other?
15th and Stewart do have adequate landscaping.
So it'd just be the south end?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir, we are providing.
Sir, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
Efrain Soto, Marina Valley, California. We're providing a landscaping island. Right now, there's, there's nothing, just, just space in, because we cannot provide, you know, the, the strip on the south side. We are providing an island in the middle, as you can see on the, on the, okay, on the front, sorry.
You can just set that right in the middle and we're on, we can see you.
Okay. On this portion here, we are providing an island because we cannot put the, the strip right here, but we are providing an island here, so as well. We're trying to work with.
Mr. Chairman, any other questions?
Commissioner Steinman had a comment, and then Vice Chairman Trowbridge.
Can I ask you, when you have a service on Sunday and during the week, let's say Sunday, how many people usually attend the service?
Well, our congregation right now is about 110 people.
110?
Yeah.
Because I noticed in the report that you have 100 chairs and a long length of benches.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Which lead me to believe that you could seat 125?
Yeah, we.
At least?
Right. As it is, yes.
Okay, all right. Now, today, where do these people park when the parking lot is limited like it is right now? Are they definitively looking to occupy the streets on Sundays?
Okay. Based on the requirement, the parking requirement, that's, that's why we're working on two different ways on benches, because the parking requirement is one is based on every 20.
Why?
So we are working in two ways because, as you can see, we're trying to maximize the use of the, of the existing building. And the church has different meetings, and one of the meetings sometimes used, trying to, you know, needs to have tables, and that's why we're in this variance, because we are trying to, on the, on the back, if you see the floor plan, on the back.
Yeah.
We're trying to, you know, have chairs, and, and we can remove it, just put tables, depends on the meeting, and that's why, but if we, I mean, if, if you guys decide on that or, or something, we can work with, with the parking spaces, but we're actually looking for, for have that kind of flexibility on the building.
If, if we forget the benches and we have 100 seats, I'm trying to imagine in my mind how many cars are coming to fill 100 seats only. And I see 29 spaces available, and I go, I think there are a lot of people in the streets around here would be my guests on a Sunday.
Okay, well, based on the, on the, on the code.
No, the code, let's not talk code for a second.
Okay.
Let's talk reality.
Okay.
You have a area which you can put 100 seats. Somehow 100 people could come in and occupy those seats. They didn't bring 100 cars, I understand that, but maybe they've got 50 or 40, and you have 29. Where are we going to put them? In reality. And you want some, more than you should to be compact size, correct? Is that what you're asking?
That's correct. That's one of the.
Okay, yeah.
Those variances that we're asking for too.
Okay. And, and the way gas prices are going, I'll go along with you to a point on that one. That one doesn't bother me because I think we're going that direction anyway again. But I, I just have a little bit of a problem with where all these people are parking. And are they parking in the neighborhood? Yes, they are. And are the neighbors unhappy about that or are they living with it? And that's my concern. I just want to make sure that we're not overburdening the neighborhood. Thank you.
Any more comments or questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion. Once again, I respect the comments and I, I wonder how many of the congregants live in your neighborhood, because I'm fairly familiar with that area. And I, I kind of think if there was a parking problem, it would be for a few hours on a Sunday, and I don't think anybody would be too unhappy with people parking along Stewart or whatever, but I think that you have sufficient parking and I don't imagine it would become a problem. And I almost feel like in that area of town, if you had a parking problem, it would be a good thing, because that area needs all the help it can get. My only hesitation is, as a church, you're not on the tax roll, so that's a real disadvantage, I think, from the community standpoint, but I'm glad to see that you're putting some effort and some money into that area because it does have tremendous potential. But my question is, do you have people from within the neighborhood who walk to, to, to there or who ride with other people?
Who will be walking into the, to the building?
Yes.
Honestly, no, we don't have many people there. There's a couple, there's a few people, but not.
When people come by car, are there lots of people that climb in and they go together or is it?
Most of the time, yeah, they do. I mean, we, we do.
Okay. Well, you know, I.
Don't worry, brother, I got 62 churches in a five-mile square radius in, in my ward.
I think the, the variance is minor, and I'm of the opinion that, that it wouldn't be a problem. So my recommendation and my motion would be for approval of agenda item number 17 for the variance for parking.
Motion on the floor for approval on item 17, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Item 18?
On item 18, the site development review that provides the minimal waiver to the landscaping, my motion would be for approval. I would caution you though, before I make the motion, I hope that whatever landscaping you put in there, you maintain, because in my seven years on this commission, I far too often push the button yes, and people have agreed to landscaping, and then five years later I go, oh, and it's all dead. So I'm going to cruise down there in a year or two and let's hope it's alive. My motion would be for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 18, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Commissioner Trowbridge showed an abstention. Should show a yes vote.
Those matters go forward to council on July 16.
Item 21, VAR 27964, owner, City of Las Vegas, applicant, Alpha Omega Strategies, to allow 640 parking spaces where 696 spaces are required on the west side of Decatur Boulevard, approximately 150 feet south of Vegas Drive. Item 22, SUP 28101, for proposed senior citizen apartments. Item 23, SUP 28102, to allow an 11-story, 135-foot building where 105 feet is the maximum height allowed in the airport overlay district. Item 24, SDR 27965, for a proposed 11-story, 416-unit senior citizen apartment development with 56,150 square feet of commercial, 47,700 square feet of government facilities, fire station, and a park with a waiver of the residential adjacency standards to allow approximately 183 feet where 405 feet is required, and a waiver to allow a six-foot wide landscape buffer on the southern portion of the site where eight feet is required. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed development will further the goals of Las Vegas Master Plan 2020 by providing attainable affordable senior citizen housing. Staff is in support of the proposed site development plan, review, and all associated applications, and therefore is recommending approval. Thank you.
Staff, or applicable?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Michael McDonald, 4908 Carmen Boulevard, owner of Alpha Omega Strategies and developer, partner, developer in this project. With me here tonight is William Bain, our other partner in the project, along with Bruce Bain, his father, and the Bain family. I thank you for taking your time tonight. To say this is a, project is a long time coming is a grossly understatement. This project, as many of you have been involved in the community, you've been pillars, you've been leaders, and many of you were born and raised in this community, you know that this used to be the old Wonder World site. And when I say Wonder World, some of our newcomers scratch their head and say, what is Wonder World? It was the Walmart of the yesteryear. My address that I gave tonight is also my office, it's also my residence. I'm a resident of this neighborhood, I'm literally two blocks from this site. I've been there for 43 years. I was born and raised there. Many of my friends and my partner, it was a Kool-Aid house in the 70s, and it once was a thriving neighborhood. Over the years, we've seen, I had the privilege of, Councilman Hawkins represented our area. I had the privilege to represent it, along with Lois Tarkanian, Lawrence Weekly, and now City Councilman Ricky Barlow. Through all those years, as many of you have seen, redevelopment has always been on the forefront of the city of Las Vegas, and also giving a man and a woman a hand up, not a hand out. This is one of those neighborhoods. If you can see right there in the picture which you have before you today, the Sunshine Cafe, we also have the laundromat. That was a, belonged by the Fong family. Many of you know Lily and Wing Fong were leaders of our community, and this was, again, a staple of our community. As the, the time went by, at one point, when the city of Las Vegas purchased this, we were really looking forward to find any type of development to enhance the neighborhood. All of our grocery marts left, a lot of our major tenants left, and basically left the people that own these properties in great need to find tenants to sustain themselves. Over the years, we've seen where Fong's garden turned into a laundromat, we lost the pizza den, we lost Sizzler's, we lost the Miller's Family Steakhouse. The one thing that did remain was the Sunshine Cafe. And if any of you ever liked the traditional greasy spoon, please stop by, because over the years, this has been the thriving point of our neighborhood that has survived. It's owned by, it's privately owned by friends and family members that have taken a vested interest in the community. I say this all tonight is because I've seen my neighborhood become victim of blight, graffiti. Last week, I had a man robbed right in front of my house at gunpoint. $800 was stolen. This is not the neighborhood I grew up in. It happens because I can tell you from law enforcement background and also from sitting where you are and having the privilege to serve with you, it's because there's no stability in our neighborhood. It's become transient. What's once was green space is now rocks and dirt and weeds. Cars parked on lots. Trash built up front. Vacant homes that have fallen victim to, to the market. Not just in your neighborhood, but in mine. But worse than mine, because when they're vacant, they now become victims, victims of vandalism. We've had fires of vacant apartments. When we started this project, a year after I left office, we came by and we met with the council representative, Councilwoman Tarkanian. And it was a goal that is you and the city have set, and it was a goal of mine. We wanted to provide affordable housing for senior citizens. And when I say senior citizens, I mean senior citizens that have no place to go, that are on fixed income, that have served our country well. World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and also the stability that kept America going while our men and women were at war. They come now to find themselves in their golden years aren't so golden. I can sit here, like I've said before, and you've heard many of our politicians when they're running for office. You have to decide to pay for your prescriptions, you have to decide to pay for your meals, you have to decide to pay for your rent. We've seen in our studies that they've had senior citizens crammed, four of them, to a one-bedroom apartment, to a studio. Many of you, what you've seen, four. Imagine four grown men sharing a studio apartment in order to get by. I know firsthand, because my two best friends are senior citizens, and I've had the privilege of having them live with me, and I've lived with them for all these years. And I can tell you firsthand, a prescription, when one of my family members, my mother took ill, one of her shots was $3,000. She had to have four of those a day. Now where do you turn? Where do you turn? How do you pay for rent? That's where we took today, and we started compiling these projects and these stats, and that's how we arrived, over this long journey, meeting with the councilman, Councilman Ricky Barlow, which we probably have as our representative here today, and all of you. This is a team effort. It's 400 units right now, phase one, 416 to be exact. These provide, it's 60% median income. For many of you, that, that would be if your mother or father was living, you lost either one of them, they had to turn and decide where to live. They lost their house, they couldn't afford to keep it up, they couldn't afford to pay for rent or pay for prescriptions. That's the people we're looking out for right now. HUD today, last week, gave us a stat. In 2005, when I stood before you once, we had a stat of 10,000 senior citizens with no place to go. Two weeks ago, we stood represented with HUD, in this valley right now, 65,000 senior citizens are either pushed together or no place to go. Where do they go? And you'll hear every politician from stem to stern, myself included when I was running, we're going to provide, we're going to do the great job, we're going to take care of our senior citizens. It's, it's far, far more difficult to do. I can tell you, we have a great federal delegation, we have a great city council, mayor city council, and we have a great planning commission, which I'm pondering here tonight. We, when we first came before you, we had to figure everything we could to meet the needs of the neighborhood, the goals of Councilman Ricky Barlow, the goals of this neighborhood, and all our other city councilmen who represent us. Number one goal, Councilman Barlow held eight neighborhood meetings. We attended every neighborhood meeting there was, to show our project and to tell them the same stats and statistics that I'm sitting here tonight telling you. We met the needs of the neighborhood to find and bring back what it once was, a thriving center. I believe we found, using the master developer, developer of the Bain family, using their experience, we've allowed, go out and find tenants that will give a shot in this neighborhood, that will bring this neighborhood back, and also meet the needs and the goals of the mayor city council and this planning commission. We have today, confidentially, I can tell you, we have signed, we have a large box tenant that is in negotiation with an LOI. We have two up front markets that are, that are willing to come forward, and we also want to revitalize some of the tenants that are there, maybe give them a hand up, working hand in hand with our neighbors on both sides. As you can see, we started this, we tried to meet the goals of the city. In 1992, a study was done of the fire needs, the fire assessments. And during my tenure on the city council, we found out that we had no space, nowhere to go to put a fire station. So working with the mayor city council, we found out now, we can maybe put one in our building. So working under the guidance of Planning Commissioner, Planning Director Wheeler, we found out we can meet the goals and objectives of the, of the city, and we went back to our engineering, re-engineered it. So we're going to be able to build a four bay station, something this neighborhood's needed since 1992, one of those first brought on up to today. The space is there, we want to be the community partner, we want to be the community standard, not the norm. So by building a fire station in here, we felt we could meet the needs of also our younger people in the back that live and go to J.T. McWilliams, where I attended. We have a buy-in from the neighborhood. When I told them we actually have a fire station in our area, as many of you know, fire stations lower assurance, insurance. It also provides security for the neighborhood. If the neighborhood buys in, they're one of the neighbors, they're one of the partners. And listen to the neighbors at Councilman Barlow's meetings, they are. They're in dire need of this, and we want to be the people that are there. That was one. The big box, Councilman Barlow, when he was in the neighborhood meetings, he kept finding the feedback that we had to have something that would revitalize this area, a supermarket. And many of you know, there was, we drove up and down the streets, we have a couple different supermarkets in our area. When Wonder, when, I call it Wonder World and Lucky's, when they left, they went up to Lake Mead and Jones', which is now Smith's. Very beautiful store, but that's what created this void. So here we are today, almost 20 years later, trying to revitalize this. The, the standards that we have, the building itself is, as you read in the variance, it's 10 stories, it's actually 11 stories as far as the height requirements. We have a variance in with the FAA, and according to NRS standards, our residency, JC standards, setbacks, they meet that because there are no setbacks as far as the mixed use. So I think we tried to meet everything there is out. We have a couple neighbors that had, had concerns about the height. We met with them at Councilman Barlow's meetings to find exactly what the fair medium was in order to meet the goals and needs of the city. That's how we reached the height. This has been touted around back east in Washington. This has never been done in the city, or county of Clark, state of Nevada, where you have a large senior citizen complex. This is actually more secure, we're able to guard it with our security force, getting in and out of the building. We're actually able to guard the fire station, which is one of, will be one of our tenants. It makes it all around, instead of the garden-style apartments, which we've seen throughout, and many of you either developed or have been involved in the development of it, this is able to get senior citizens that are maybe mobile, handicapped, or maybe a little physically handicapped, we're able to get them in and out with elevators and protect them from the ground up. It's a design that you've seen, many of you that travel back, back and forth through the Midwest or back east, we're able to kind of copy their designs. So we have the privilege of great poets write, greater poets copy. So I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel. Again, if there's any questions, I can, I'm kind of in brief overview, and I apologize for the speech, but in order to tell you kind of the history of this, because it has been on the books for a long time, it has survived a fire drill in the city of Las Vegas last week, it has survived a lawsuit that was incurred by the other council person that, that represented the area. We've had everything you can imagine, from blown over buildings to fires in the neighborhood, to shootouts and gang graffiti. This project has survived it, and has survived it with the great men and women that worked for the city of Las Vegas, and also the leadership of the mayor city council and you folks. So I will get off my soapbox and answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody for or against this item? Please come forward. And I do thank you for the numerous neighborhood meetings. I think most of the issues were probably worked out within the neighborhood where they should have been. Mr. McGowan, please.
Thank you, sir. Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident, and candidate for election, Glatt County, Commissioner District D., and I believe this is going to be located in District D. I used to ride in Las Vegas in 1954, and so I have a very clear recollection of what was then called Wonder World. And I'm fully convinced, before I ask one or two questions, about just fess up, that I have a kind of a sore spot in my heart for this project, because I believe it can be, it can be a wonderful world for seniors, is needed. I'm sure that the principals involved in the development of it are absolutely sincere and certainly expertise to perform these tasks. But I hear an awful lot about facilities, properties, sizes, shapes, this, that, the other, very little about people. So I would like the applicant through the chair to describe briefly, in a few paragraphs, the amenities that are available to the seniors. For example, is this an assisted living facility or not? And I happen to be a senior, so I am aware of certain sensitivities that I would look for. For example, in an affordable housing, 11 stories, what is the, what is the square footage of the footprint? When you have that much commercial, 58,000, I believe it was, that's about twice what it is at Newport Los, at Newport Los' twice the height of this one. So that's about a lot of commercial. Where's the piano bar, for example? I'm not kidding when I say that. I'm seniors, I don't go to rap darts, okay? But I would go to a piano bar, especially if I was working there and playing. Seniors want to hear music for grownups, so I assume that there's going to be some kind of facility there, maybe more than one, that would appeal to grownups. And we need more grownups in this community, believe it or not. We have a little less childishness, a little less gang with you and stuff of that nature, and more serious people like grandparents. And if you have enough parking spaces, maybe they'll have enough visitors, if they're fortunate enough to have survivors, children, grandchildren, who will come and make this a viable community, not just a piece of property. You have a chance here to build a world. If you build a world, they will come and they will stay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd incidentally recommend approval.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to come speak for or against this item? Please come forward. Name and address for the record, sir.
Kevin Orphanlock, 4919 Santo Avenue. I live in the neighborhood, and, and I'm for the project overall, I just had a couple questions that I wanted to get cleared. One of the things was, and I spoke with Mike McDonald in the back, and I just wanted to make sure that I'm, that I understand everything. My concern is, he builds this, that opens the door for, let's say, a casino buying the property, you know, across the street on Vegas Drive, and now they want to build 100-foot, or 135-foot thing. I want to find out, is that in the zone? I, I mean, I don't know what the, I don't know what, where the casino zoning is in that area, and I, I'm kind of concerned that I don't want to end up with that. Pardon me?
There is no casino zoning in that area.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any issues with anybody coming in and do that? Okay, that would be good. And the other question I have for, for Mike is, just out of curiosity, how many, how many rooms is that actually, approximately?
We have four and 16 right now.
Okay, and the other question I have is, Mr. Chairman, the other question I have is, is there any reason why this strip right here couldn't be set back in and then more parking here, so it's a little further from this? I'm just curious, I know how the design process works, I'm just wondering, is that a possibility?
Go ahead, Nate.
Mr. Chairman, also, I would also defer to our architect. Kevin and I were speaking, we had, the concern was the setback with the ratio, and we tried to make this feasible as possible in order to meet the needs of the fire department, and also meet the parking requirements as we had.
Right.
And that, I believe, this is where we came up with, we worked this through our numerous meetings with the neighborhood and through Councilman Barlow. We worked a lot of these in order to meet the, and facilitate the needs of, of both. Also, the reason, one of the reasons is, is the fire department and also the commercial parking that we need. The other one was that, as many of you know, that this is a, anytime you do an affordable project, there's a formula to it. And I didn't have a chance to tell, okay, I apologize. There's a, is, when you take one domino out of one side, it affects the one on the other and the one on top. So the project itself has to be able to stand alone, just for the housing minus the commercial. So the square footage of that also meets the parking requirements and also in the back. So it's kind of a fitted formula, that's why it is fitted right here and also in the back. So believe me, that's, and we are neighbors, we've been neighbors for many, many years. We try to meet all the concerns of, of the neighborhood. To be selfish, we have a very hard stake than many other people that are, that are sitting here, because it will affect our property values if it's done wrong. So to be selfishly, it's going to be done right.
Thank you. George, you finished?
One of the questions, just out of curiosity, I saw that on the slides, they showed what the front of the building looks like.
are sitting here, because it will affect our property values if it's done wrong. So to be selfishly, it's going to be done right.
Okay, thank you. George, you finish?
Uh, one of the questions, just out of curiosity, I saw that on the slides, they showed what the front of the building looks like, what does the back of the building look like that's going to be facing the neighborhood?
We will have him put those elevations up for you.
That's the front.
Yeah, that's kind of, and, and the, the front, if you notice the portico chair, uh, Kevin, the backside's almost going to be the same, uh, the same kind of texture. Uh, and there was concerns of look of the building. Uh, we are building this on, in a budget from the federal government, uh, and from the state, and from the city of Las Vegas. Uh, we, it will look very pretty, it will be done right, but as far as the design, um, our architect has worked hours upon hours to try and make this work and fit within our budget restraints. Uh, there is a, is a state policy, and Mr. Truesdale, I'll speak directly to you as a, as a developer, uh, we have to defer 80% of our developer fee, and quite honestly, once you, as you take your taxes out and, and do everything and divide and provide a partnership, I made more as a rookie cop than I will on this building right now. So, uh, I'm proud to be involved, it's doing it for all the right reasons, but, uh, as you know, I don't know many people that would defer 80% of their developer fee, especially when I send and talk to my partners, who are master developers and have developed Boca Loa, Nevada, they know their business, and when they, so we're going to defer 80% of our building because it's a state policy, it was kind of a, uh, kind of a hardened nut to swallow, if you will. So that was, uh, but the design of the building fits with, we try to make as architecturally pleasing as possible, fitting within the budget restraints we had. But it will look nice, again, to be selfish, it's in our neighborhood.
Right.
And it, it will, it will fit.
And then one other question.
Thank you very much.
Uh, you mentioned, you know, like Sunshine Cafe and the Swiss Cleaner, uh, what about the properties on the other side? Are they, are they going to be?
They're actually owned by a separate owner. There are three parcels, uh, you have, um, Mr. Bloom owns this parcel, if you will, to the south, to the north is owned by the, the Fong family, um, um, Ken and his sister, and, uh, and her, and her husband, and I believe, um, Fong's, Ken's ex-wife or wife owns the dry cleaners. So, uh, we cannot touch those, obviously, we have a, uh, a, no stake in their property values, but we will be good neighbors, and hopefully by giving a shot here, it'll also bring up, uh, more tenants for them.
Okay, yeah, I, I just, I'd like to say I, I am in favor of this as, as a resident of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
Yes, thank you. I'd, uh, appreciate your, your concern and, and love for the community that you grew up in, your, your neighborhood. I also appreciate your enthusiasm for this project that you've worked on in various capacities for many, many years. I congratulate you for bringing it to this point. I am particularly pleased with the project because it does accommodate a, a four-bay fire and, uh, and rescue facility, which will be sorely needed to accommodate the folks living in the 416-unit, uh, part of this project. I think that, that's critical, and it's, uh, it's an excellent move. Uh, so I'm going to support all, all four of the items related to this project, but I do have one rather, uh, which may seem small, that I feel the same way you do about some of those things that David, what are you doing to the Sunshine Cafe? You're not going to hurt that, are you?
Uh, I, I, there's no way I couldn't go home. Sunshine Cafe is, uh, literally, that's, uh, as many places where everybody eats, it's, uh, it's the old, uh, it's, it's the diner where everybody gathers now, and, plus it's, uh, uh, it's a place where we eat every Sunday and, and Saturday, so.
It's going to stay and it'll still be there, and you're not going to make them clean it up or anything, are you?
No, 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 you kidding me? We change the taste of the food.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
What about bringing the slide back?
We tried and thought about that, and, uh, Mr. Bain was looking at, see if we can get the super slide brought back in, and, uh, we just couldn't fit it on the property.
I just had this vision of Mr. McGowan on the slide way back when, wasn't pretty. Um, thank you.
Mr. Chair? Couple of questions, um, could you speak about the amenities?
Yes, sir.
Could you tell us if this is assisted living and the square footage of the units, and will there be a piano bar?
Um, as far as the piano bar, we can actually have a lot. The, um, the, um, assisted living is no, we are not an, uh, assisted living process, but we, um, for people that are mobile, a little mobility handicapped, uh, this is perfect for them. Uh, that, uh, Tom would be a welcome asset to this as far as the piano bar. Uh, we have this, the meeting space up top on the one building, if you'll see, to the, to the north, it's kind of the orange-colored building as, as you speak. The, um, that's total meeting space. So for senior citizens, it's any type of recreation they can imagine. It, um, it also houses for, for meetings, either for any of you folks, or for the council person, the mayor, county commissioner, gives an opportunity for people to get involved. We've also worked with some of the community outreach groups that, uh, we'd like to have. The, um, we've spoken earlier in the past with the YMCA, we felt their summer, their, their, um, summer programs for the senior citizens, as well as the yearly programs they have for senior citizens, which we started back when I was a city councilman, working with Mike Libby at the YMCA, and their, their board of directors and their leadership. It was a great, uh, meeting facility, it was also a great activity for senior citizens to get involved, from Sartini and, and, um, James Down Towers and the surrounding area. As far as transportation, we will provide transportation, also working with, and it was brought up by Kevin, um, there's some of the casinos in the area that senior citizens want to go, we can maybe have bingo day and kind of work with them in the past. We've, we've talked to, to a couple of our area casinos, tell them what we're bringing in. They like it because it's an opportunity for them to get involved community-wise, not just to get the seniors' dollars, but as far as community, they want it to be involved. The, uh, piano bar, as Tom mentioned, we, you know, he can play piano up there if we can get a piano, and be, be a great asset. We are going to have a kitchen up there on, on one of our tops, on the very top floor. Uh, Mr. Bain, William Bain to my left, is also a accomplished staff, as well as a, uh, as a developer, so we're going to have movie night. Uh, we were, we've spoken with, um, Jeff Howard, for many of you on Channel Two, as well as Channel Three, he's the movie guy, he's the movie critic. We spoke extensively with Mr. Howard, and he's donating time, DVDs, movies, also interviews, posters. He, he's heavily involved, and his commitment came as the other day. Eddie Roberts has a studio, design and graphic studio. He's, uh, committed to help with the senior citizens as, uh, as far as the designs, get them involved artistically, and help them produce, like many short movies, to keep them involved, give them more to do. You also know we have the Ed Fountain Park, which is directly east of this project, uh, working hard, hardly with Councilman Barlow. Hopefully, we can build a senior center on the property that just came available from the BLM. We'd like to work extensively from them, and also using the programs that the city of Las Vegas brings, and also the YMCA. As the weather cools off, we can do programs across the street at the park. Um, that's pretty much, uh, I can cover. Uh, is there any other questions? I think I kind of hit, we also have doctors that will come in from time to time. We have negotiations with some of the doctors on our other space, um, that's either privately negotiation with the city right now, and also with a, um, a large doctor's office that may take the very north tower, or south tower.
Did we find out the, the, the square footage on the units? Put your name and address on the record, please.
Um, William Bain, 7069 Arcadia Glen Court. Um, the one-bedroom units are approximately 450 square feet, the two-bedroom units are approximately 650 square feet. There are nine elevated residential floors above the first floor, which is housing the fire station in these bays. Um, to answer the gentleman's question through the chairperson, um, it's hard to set it back further without affecting, uh, how the fire trucks pull out on the Laurelhurst, so that's one issue.
The park.
Yeah, here's the park we have as an amenity that, that Mr. McDonald also mentioned, which I'm grateful for. The other amenity we have on each of those nine elevated floors, we do have a gathering room for the seniors. In addition, we have some, um, space for, uh, a computer room and for a workout room on some of the floors.
Thank you. Questions and comments by the commissioners?
One other comment, if I could, Mr. Mr. Chair. Um, as far as the, uh, we have needed the disability and handicap spaces, uh, I know it's a concern of, of Commissioner Quinn. Uh, we went above and beyond to make sure we had enough, uh, of the, the meeting space and handicap spaces. Uh, since this is a commercial mixed-use plus senior citizens, we felt that, uh, we had to provide larger and more, um, uh, mobile parking spaces.
Commissioner Quinn and Commissioner Steiman.
Um, I, you know, my mother lives in an assisted living, and it's a great place, but their management, uh, company is terrible. They're constantly changing, she, it's just terrible, so I'm hoping, um, that you guys have someone in place that's going to stay and just, because what happens to these seniors is they get really used to someone, and then they're gone, and it's sad, and then they change everything, and, you know, continuity and consistency is really important. So my concern for you, Mr. Bain, is who's going to manage this project, this beautiful project, um, start to finish after it's built?
Um, we have talked to and are in negotiations with a management company that specifically handles affordable senior housing. Again, this is not necessarily a, an assisted, um, facility, however, we have contacted several assisted facilities in town to help come in and possibly take seniors for senior daycare. That's still under negotiations. Um, as far as the management company, they've been in town for, for quite a long time, it's, uh, Bob McNamara and his family, and, uh, they do affordable senior housing, specifically dealing with HUD and qualifying residents for their rents every year, they have to be qualified to live here at 60% of the adjusted median.
By managing, by managing, I kind of mean even organizing their daily activities, even though it's unassisted living, it's like making sure the bus there is there on time, you know, they, they need a list, they need a sign-up list, and my poor mom would go sign up for something, and then the next day, it's like, oh, well, that guy didn't show up, or this guy, it, it's been such a terrible problem for her, and we're spending top dollar for her to live where she's living, and there's no consistency, and it saddens me, so I hope for real.
We're actually, uh, to address that concern a little bit, we're actually, in, in negotiating with Bob McNamara and his family, we've actually agreed to put on several onsite people 24 hours a day. So there will always be people onsite, both maintenance, um, if there's a, if there's a toilet that breaks down during the night, they can actually respond during the night. Um, we also have some things that we're doing from an architectural standpoint, so that, uh, perhaps there's, uh, an emergency switch in their room, if they don't turn the switch off, then we know to check on them during the day. So some of those things we are trying to put in there. Um, again, as far as, uh, organizing activities, we're going to look to some, uh, leadership from the actual apartments and how they work vis-à-vis a floor at a time to kind of help. We're going to try to put some amenities in there, so they can kind of work together. We have the meeting room, the community meeting room, we have the, uh, cardiovascular room, um, possibly a little weight room and a computer room. So we're hoping to generate a community atmosphere there to help overcome kind of that concern, because that's a concern. My grandmother also was in a, uh, assisted living facility just recently, and it was quite disturbing if you have a new nurse come on, it's, it's, it threw her for a loop to have a new nurse come in and, and not know her, not know what she's going to do, they're concerned, they're scared, so we understand that, and we are trying to address those things.
Commissioner, also, we, we intend to be onsite, um, representatives from us, we intend to, to run it the same way we did when we represented the Housing Authority, hands-on, uh, so they had direct access when I was, when we were in our office, Rick Henry, my partner in this, uh, he handled all their, all their questions and concerns. We also intend to work directly with the, the Las Vegas Housing Authority underneath the guidance of Carl Rowe and their leadership of their board, as well as the, um, some of the guidance from North Las Vegas, um, their, their board, because this is a regional project. We, we tried to reach out to everybody we could in order to make this, make this a, a wonderful facility. It is not, it is not the creme de la creme, like you see at Queens Ridge or, or, um, or anywhere around the valley, some of the very, very nicer ones where your mother's at, but it's also an opportunity where we can provide almost the same quality, just in a different location.
And I just want to mention to Mr. Bain, because I know his children have attended Faith Lutheran, and, and my kids at Bishop Gorman, so many kids are looking for community service hours.
That's the other part.
You call up and you say, you know what, I need 10 kids once a week, you're going to get an outpouring of kids to, you know, to hang out there, and it's just a suggestion, and I'd be very willing to work with, uh, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Henry on that, because, um, you know, it's just a suggestion, so.
No, I appreciate that, and quite frankly, that's, when we started to lay this out, the fire, we met with the fire chief, and the fire chief actually asked us specifically to put the park in there for that specific reason. On Saturdays, the fire chief wants the, uh, what are they called? They're not ambulances, they're the paramedic.
Mr. Chairman, if we don't vote on this soon, I'm going to be eligible to, sorry.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
You're already eligible.
I'm gonna go up to the piano bar and try and rap on the keys.
It's $55, so we, uh.
I'll bring you a beer.
Commissioner Steiman?
Uh, I am definitively a senior citizen, so I guess I can speak on this, but I am interested sometimes when I look at, uh, the parking requirements that we have in our city. And somebody needs to tell me, out of the 47,700 square feet that's in the government facility, what's there besides the fire department in addition to that? In addition to that?
Well, we have actually, uh, 30,000 square feet of, of, uh, leasable space here in the, in the main building. There's actually 30,000 square feet, there's approximately 11,000 square feet for the four-bay fire station, approximately 19,000 square feet on top for, uh, offices, um, city meeting rooms, et cetera, et cetera. So there's actually 30,000 square feet in this building, there's 40 here, 9,000 here, um, 5,000 here, and 3,100 square feet here.
All right, so if there's 11,000 of fire department, that's what you're saying?
Yes, sir, on the first floor.
Then we're requiring about, uh, 35 or 40 parking spaces for the fire?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we really don't have a shortage of parking here?
No, sir, not at all.
Can we get down to it?
In our feeling, not at all.
Okay, I would agree with you 100%.
Thank you.
But I know we have to calculate it a certain way. The other item I want to ask, ask you, Michael, is, is this being financed by a HUD program?
Yes, sir. Go through it finally.
We're actually using a HUD program, 221D4.
D4?
Yes.
Old program?
Yes. It hasn't been used here for a while.
Is it, yeah, it's a supplemental, you're supplementing it with state funding at all or anything?
Um, what happens with the 221D4, you have a, a bond allocation, private activity bonds, that the city allocates. You have the state that typically matches, not, they don't have to, but typically they do, and then that's also subsidized by a 4% tax credit that you get as long as you're financing at least 50% of the project with private activity bonds.
I, yes, that's what, all right. And I, I strongly support, since I'm on the board of a company in Southern California that is nothing but senior housing, and we probably have 25 affordables, and when I came to this city, there's a real void in this city when it comes to senior housing. Yeah, I live in Sun City, and that's a different level. It's the level you're talking about that's so deficient in this community, and, and I hope this happens.
Well, and to give Mike a lot of credit here, this is a very hard thing to do with a 221D4 program.
Really is, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments from the board?
I'd like to make the motion.
Seeing none, we will entertain a motion on item 21.
I'd like to make a motion for approval with all, uh, staff's recommendations of item 21, uh, variance 27964.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 21, please cast your vote. That motion has passed, item 22.
I'd like to go and make the motion for item 22, SUP 28101, for approval with all staff's recommendations.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 22, please cast your vote.
Moving on quickly to.
That motion has passed.
Item 23, SUP 28102, for approval with all staff's recommendations.
Motion for approval on item 23, please cast your vote.
And last, but not least, I'm sorry, is that it?
Item 24?
Um, last but not, but not least, I move for approval of, uh, uh, item 24, SDR 27965, with all staff's recommendation, wishing you all the luck in the world in this project.
Motion on the floor for approval on item 24, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
All matters go forward to council on July 16th.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank each and every one of you, and formally ask you, please, we will get you the groundbreaking, we'd like to have all you there shovels in hands. Uh, this is a community effort, so please, I'll send a formal invitation, but this is something, a long time coming. And the Lakers, 66, Boston 48, have a wonderful night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We're going to move to items 28 and 29, which are related items, and we will take a short break right after that. Item 28, SUP 27870, applicant owner, MRA LLC, for a proposed 4,344 square foot supper club in conjunction with a proposed nightclub with a waiver to allow a 60-foot distance separation from a childcare facility where 400 feet is required at 8991 West Sahara. Item 29, SUP 28192, for a proposed nightclub in conjunction with a proposed supper club. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the uses to be compatible with the surrounding area and is recommending approval.
Is the applicant present on this item? Please come forward. Please state your name and address.
Nina Alfa Farah, 2300 Whispering Hill Circle, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89117.
Want to tell us what you want to do? And do you agree with all staff's recommendations and conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Tell us about it.
Well.
Does it have a piano bar?
Uh, no. It's been a childhood dream to have a restaurant. And my passion for creating and exploring a new business venture stems from the knowledge that it's an ever-changing society where people needs varies. I intend to open this business not for the sole purpose of gaining money, but also to have a connection with the community. It will serve the need of people who needs variety, a place to feel comfortable, safe and relaxing, a place to entertain friends and family, even enemies that will help ease the tension of everyday stresses. Fine dining and music and dancing are a matter of importance to people who wants to get away from stresses of job and relationship. To meet these demands, it will open up an opportunity for people with experience in the business to have a job that they will enjoy. I cannot work alone. I shall need the help of people with strong sense of commitment that is very necessary to ensure its success. Being in a competitive society, we will have the best of staff that will work for us. The cuisine is of Philippine origin, and for those who have not had experience, will find it delicious and filling. It is a kind of culture teaching through experience that stays longer in their taste buds and memory. In this business, there will be a need of different supplies necessary for its full functional capability, thereby will be dependent on other businesses, thus it enhance their growth and development as well. With businesses flourishing, the government share is not far behind, so it's a win-win situation for everyone. The community that I will serve will be proud to have this establishment in this neighborhood, and I will devote my time and effort to make this place landmark where people can wish to come back to. They will experience a liberating sense through fine dining, dancing, that is suitable for all various walks of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very well said. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody like to speak on this item? Please come forward. Mr. McGowan?
I'm Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. I speak two languages, English and profane. But I believe that the language at this place of business will be Tagalog, am I right?
Not really.
Is it Philippine, Asian?
The cuisine will be of Philippine.
Philippine language and the Philippines is Tagalog, one of them. And many Tagalics. And I see on your sign, although it's hard to read, it says ballroom and restaurant. Mr. Chairman, so apparently dancing is a primary activity along with the restaurant. And I would indicate, in my experience in the Pacific during the Korean War, I touched in many different places, one of which was Guam. I had the privilege of providing musical entertainment at a dance hall in Guam. I can guarantee you, the Filipino community can dance, and they do. They're very active, socially interactive, in a lady and gentleman way. And when you talk about diversity in this increasingly growth-oriented valley, it's very important to recognize the Filipino, Asian community is a very, very strong element of support of the rest of this community. They may not necessarily have the same visible presence everywhere, but it's about time that they did. And I think that this very attractive aesthetically pleasing premises here would be the ideal place to do it. And in that part of town, it would be a feather in the cap of the entire valley. So I recommend very strongly approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this item? Please come forward at this time. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Michael Garwin, a two-year resident of Las Vegas, by Charleston Eastern Area. First time I've come to one of these meetings. It's very educational, and I lived in the Philippines once in the 90s, doing business there. And I'm all in favor of more Philippine restaurants. That's all.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else, we'll close the public hearing. Comments and questions from the board? Mr. Steinman, Commissioner Steinman.
I'd just like to ask the staff, I know we're doing this because we have a 60-foot distance separation from a childcare facility, but where is it on this map?
The childcare facility is located at the, it's indicated as 2720 Crystal Water.
Oh.
It's the childcare facility for Citibank.
Oh, for Citibank?
For Citibank. It's their childcare facility.
And it's barely touching.
It is, to get from one location to the other would take quite a bit of traversing of various streets and.
I thought it was a tavern, the way the color was coming out. So I understand that, but thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I think some of the concerns that I see in the staff backup is, the way the application has to be written is that they need a zoning for a special use permit for the nightclub aspect. And the backup says it's primarily for ballroom dancing. If there's an appetite for approval of this, my only concern would be that perhaps we have a period of review, a year or two, to make sure that it hasn't become a problem and. Okay?
I do concur. Any more comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Truesdale?
I am going to abstain from this item, given as much as I am involved in a real estate transaction, property within the notice area.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. I did want to note, there were about eight, approximately eight protests on this as well. And the nature of that, one of them was that they thought there was too many nightclubs in this area and/or night activity with casinos, and they didn't want any more noise. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Motion, please.
There's no further comments, then I'm willing to make the motion on item number 28, special use permit, 27870. Make a recommendation to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions with the addition of one more condition, and that would be a one-year administrative review of the license to identify if there's any problems with the operation, which I doubt would happen.
Motion on the floor for approval with an added condition? Please cast your vote. That motion has approved, with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining. Item 29.
Make a motion for approval for special use permit, 28192, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 29. Please cast your vote. And that motion has been approved, with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining.
Both matters.
Good luck.
Both matters go to city council on July 16.
Thank you. I may come in there and try my Chicago step on the ballroom floor. We're going to take a break for about 10 minutes, and we'll come back on item number 30.
We can't take your wife. They don't hire the kind of... They just... 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 They just...
I'm hungry. I'm hungry. I'm hungry. What's that? Jim, here he's my... Lakers by three. Sorry, four-four. Four-four. Mm-hmm. Do you want to talk? Turn on the camera. Get on. Melt it down here. Yeah. You don't mind up there. Oh, my God. Wheelchair, ant move. He's pointing out. Play a Rocky and what. Bragging. Six, eight, six. I don't know what. Twenty-eight, forty minutes. Twenty-eight as one year ahead than with you. Is this handout number thirty-eight? Yeah, I remember. That's number thirty-eight on the agenda. If you want the first one. It does work. She wouldn't make just come. It'll be all dinner in the morning. We're going to begin in about one minute. Thank you. Item thirty, SUP two-seven-nine-three-three, applicant owner Hector Camacho for a proposed restaurant with a service bar with waivers to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a childcare facility and to allow a fifty-eight-foot separate distance separation from a school where four hundred feet is required at four-five-six-one East Bonanza. Is the applicant present? We'll go ahead and trail this item. Let's move on to item thirty-one and thirty-two, which are related items. Item thirty-one, SUP...
Mr. Chairman, I think she's here for thirty. Ms. Chairman?
I'm here for thirty, but I'm not the applicant.
We'll trail it, and then we will, before we leave, if they don't show up, we will make sure that you get your comments on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just bear with us. Related items thirty-one and thirty-two, SUP two-seven-nine-four-five, applicant Harpurt Bra, owner Durango Structures LLC for a gaming establishment restricted within a proposed convenience store with a waiver to allow a distance separation of one hundred and fifteen feet from a single-family dwelling where three hundred and thirty feet is required at sixty-four-ten North Durango, Suite one-oh-five. Item thirty-two, SUP two-seven-nine-four-seven for a proposed beer-wine cooler off-sale establishment within a proposed convenience store. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff is unable to support the waiver request for the gaming establishment, is recommending denial, but does support the alcohol request and is recommending approval.
Thank you. Applicant?
Harpurt Bra, sixty-four-ten North Durango, drive, and I concur with the recommendations.
You, you, when you say you concur, that means you agree with all staff recommendations. On, on item thirty-one, they are recommend recommending denial for your request for, for gambling. They're saying no, but they're saying yes to the sale of the beer and the wine.
Yeah, that's the, you know, I don't know how well this goes, but you know, how can I turn into yes, but we can do a convenience store without the gaming. It's just expected.
Used to work by just snapping your finger, but unfortunately, what you need to do is explain to us what you want to do. You have to give us a compelling argument of why you feel you should be able to have that gaming within that establishment. We'll open it for a public hearing. We'll listen to that, and then we will make a decision. So tell us, tell us what you want.
I've been seven-eleven franchisee for four years. I just love seven-eleven businesses, you know. We do, do the service far as convenience business goes, and that area is very underserved pretty much by the convenience stores. And my whole idea is to get a convenience store, but, you know, all the seven-eleven is going with the gaming establishment. There's none stores that does not have it. So, you know, it's just expected by the public when they walk in. You know, I'm not trying to push the gaming. I'm more into the seven-eleven business. That's what my main goal is.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is anybody like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments and questions from commissioners?
I got a question.
Mr. Chairman?
There's a Sinclair station across the street from you.
Yes, sir.
And it has gaming in it also?
Yes, sir, it does.
So that Sinclair is actually closer to the residential unit components than, than you are. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's already there, and you're farther away. I, I really don't see a problem with it. I'm just surprised that, that you have that convenience store and don't have the gasoline components. So...
Any more questions from the board?
Thank you.
Seeing none, um...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Evans?
I'll make a motion if you're ready.
We are?
Um, I, I don't find the, the gaming component of the seven-eleven a problem. I, I think it's just the way the code is, is written. So my motion would be for approval of agenda item number thirty-one.
Motion on the floor for approval of item thirty-one. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Item thirty-two?
Item thirty-two, the SUP for the beer and wine, the staff's recommending approval. My motion would be to follow their recommendation. Motion for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval of item thirty-two. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Both matters go forward to the City Council on July sixteen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item thirty-three, SUP two-seven-nine-five-one, applicant owner OHDB LLC for a proposed hotel lounge bar in a hotel with forty-three rooms at two-six-five-one Westwood Drive. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the use to be compatible with the surrounding area and is recommending approval.
Applicant?
My name is Joe Lamaca, four-oh-one Rosemary Lane, Las Vegas. I'm the manager, manager of OHDB, and we're asking for this waiver because the law says that while you have to have a hundred and fifty rooms in order to have a lobby bar, the council and the planning commission may decide that they're extenuating circumstances, and it can be less than that.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience for or against this item?
Hello? My name's Nick Foscaras, twenty-seven-eighty El Camino Road. I manage Treasures Gentlemen's Club, which is eight hundred feet away. We're concerned about some distance requirements and requirements if we choose to do an expansion at a later date. So I guess we have a question more than anything, but in concern. There are laws that make it so we can, we have to be a certain distance away from another tavern.
The application is for a hotel lounge bar, not a tavern. Tavern is a different use.
So there is no issue with distance requirements?
This would not create a situation of an unconforming use for your, for your location.
Can I ask you how the, we have a distance requirement from the Artesian at this time?
Sir, you're going to have to ask that through. I'm going to have to abstain on this item because one of the gentlemen out there, he and I are, are, are under contract on another project in North Las Vegas, so I'll be abstaining on this one.
So if you'll ask me the question, I'll defer it to the staff member for a response. Thank you.
Currently, I believe there's a distance requirement for us with the Artesian, which is about seven or eight hundred feet further than the Blue Moon.
Margot, this, is this the vice chair?
Yeah. This is with regard to your, you have a location somewhere else.
Treasures Gentlemen's Club, which is...
And you're asking a variety of code questions?
I have concerns about us having an expansion in the future.
This site does, has no impact, so...
No impact at all.
Your other questions? Our staff member has his business card, and you can phone him separately and ask your questions that are with regard to your project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other member of the public have any comments regarding this particular item? Seeing none, we will declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Chairman, if there's no discussion, I'm prepared for a motion.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, I did have a question for staff. Could you just, could you explain the technical difference, what a, what a lounge, hotel lounge bar can and can't do?
A hotel lounge bar has to be in conjunction with a hotel. Let's, let's see. The minimum requirement is a hundred and fifty rooms, but the council or the planning commission can waive that requirement. Alcoholic beverages are to be served and concerned only at tables and booths located within the lounge bar area of the hotel, within a pool area, or within hotel rooms as incidental to room service.
There's no space, minimum space area?
No, no, there's no minimum requirement for, for square footage on a hotel lounge bar.
Mr. Steinman, did you have a comment? You okay?
If I may, just, Chairman, I'd like to, for your consideration, just reward condition number one to say conformance with all minimum requirements under Title nineteen-oh-four-oh-one-oh-four Hotel Lounge Bar Use Period.
Thank you. Glad you pointed that out.
Mr. Vice Chairman, one clarification. There is a maximum number of seats, though. Seventy-five is the maximum number of seats.
Okay. Think we're ready for a motion?
Yes, my motion would be to follow the recommendation of the staff for approval with a clarification amended by planning director Margot Wheeler.
Motion would be for approval.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post? Motion carries with Chairman going abstaining.
And that also goes forward to council on July sixteen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
SUP two-seven-nine-six-one, applicant cash back owner Lakes Plaza LLC for an auto title loan establishment with a waiver to allow a nine-hundred-foot distance separation from a similar use where one thousand feet is required, and a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a residential development where two hundred feet is required at nine-one-five-one West Sahara Avenue, Suite one-oh-three. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed auto title loan establishment fails to comply with the minimum special use permit requirements. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of this application as the use is not compatible with the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Scott Sabra, eighty-six-ten Southeastern Avenue. We believe that this one is very compatible with surrounding environment, being that it is on Sahara and Fort Apache, a major intersection with commercial on all four corners. We're ninety percent of the way to our distance separation requirement from another financial institution-specified establishment, and ninety percent is still an A in my book, so I think that's good. Also, the distance separation from the residential, as I have pointed out here, from the actual facility to the nearest residential, and this is just to the property line, is three hundred and seventy feet, well over the two hundred feet, and, and to actually get out of the residential area is much more than that. With that, we, oh, and I'd also like to add again, that cash back is only an auto title loan. They do not collect the cars. They don't do payday advance, check cashing, signature loans, et cetera. With that, I'm here to answer any questions you have and asking for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Mr. Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item as much as I involved in a real estate transaction within the notice area.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion on item thirty-four.
I'd like to make a comment before I make a motion. I noticed and went out and looked. This particular square footage that you're going to lease is right next door to a, a bank.
Correct.
And in the code, it talks about separation from a similar use, you know, and I, I just, I'm not happy with, with banks being excluded. You know, it's a twenty, it's a bank with twenty-four-hour services, and it's just, it just doesn't seem right, but it does seem to be in compliance. And I'm saying this more for staff's benefit than yours. I think we need to take another look at the difference between a financial institution-specified and a bank to see why in the world there should be a distance separation in one case but not the other. But you're coming forward under what's currently in existence, and therefore I'll make a motion in regards to item number thirty-four, special use permit, twenty-seven-nine-sixty-one, for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval. Cast your vote.
One, two, three, one, two, three.
And that is a...
That's a no action.
That's a no action.
We'll, we'll need one in the...
All right, let's revote, and Sam is going to go ahead and vote yes this time.
We'll need a motion alternative, Mr. Jim.
Do we have an alternative motion, please?
Do you want to re-vote?
Well, it was denied.
No, it was a tie.
It was a tie.
It was a tie.
So do you want a motion for denial?
Well, we need a motion the other way.
Correct.
We had a motion...
Well, I can't do it. I voted the other way.
How about a motion for denial? Somebody? Anybody?
Where I did?
Follow staff recommendations for denial.
Oh, Sam just did.
There's a motion on the floor to follow staff recommendations. Please cast your vote.
So denial passed.
So denial passed. So it, so it is denied.
So that action is final action unless appealed to the office of the city clerk within ten days.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. We're going to move real quickly to Director's business. Okay? We will be, okay? Item thirty-eight, TXT two-six-six-five-one, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, to amend Title nineteen-point-zero-six, special purpose and overlay district to update the design review process, revise maps, and update signage standards for the casino center scenic byway and entertainment district overlays. Staff?
This applicant, this text amendment came to this body previously, and there was some concern and misunderstandings with regard to whether or not this commission wished to make a recommendation to allow that buildings within the casino overlay area that are not currently occupied were allowed to be wrapped, the transparent business building wrap signage that can consist of off-premise signage. And there was a concern that the commission had voted on that without the understanding that non-occupied buildings, gaming buildings, could be wrapped. And so we're bringing the item back exactly as you saw it previously if there is a concern with regard to how the votes were brought forward.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anybody in the audience to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from board members?
Yeah. I'd like...
Commissioner Steinman?
I'm noticing something here about lead signage. Is, is there a definition of lead signage in this proposal?
Not in this proposal, but there is within the, the U.S. Green Building Council materials with regard to leadership in energy efficient design.
But I think what's meant by this may be LED, because LED relates to neon.
That's what I'm wondering. What does LED relate to signs? I think it's, it is LED.
I believe you are correct.
We're within an E of passing.
Yes.
Yes.
An E is not good.
Questioning the neon? Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, I just, Ms. Director Wheeler, the, the revision...
I, well, let me, here, let me bring it to your attention real easily. There is no revision. Again, this is being brought back, and I'll draw your attention to eight-A on the front of the materials you have in front of you. And that says that the transparent building wrap signage shall only be permitted on buildings that are currently occupied or hold a non-restricted gaming license on the premises. This means that those casinos that are vacant could still have the building wrap. The concern from, expressed by the commission, was that that was not understood when it was voted upon. So that is the matter. There's no change here. I've brought it back so that the commission can be assured that they are voting in the manner that they wish to do so.
Okay. But a yes vote would... Okay, but a yes vote would mean that a non-occupied casino could be wrapped or could not be wrapped?
Yes, yes, yes. It could be.
So the only non-occupied one down there is the Lady Luck, is that right? Is that what we're...
I believe, well, no, you've got other ones.
I mean, are there other non-occupied?
The Queen of Hearts is a non-occupied.
Queen Hearts, there you go. There are others and there could be others in the future.
But if you, is this, is, looks, the signage shall only be permitted on buildings that are currently occupied. So if a building isn't occupied in a non-gaming, in a non-gaming building...
If it was a, if it was a vacant, non-gaming building, it could not be wrapped.
Which, which means, which is actually protects the community, because otherwise you'd have buildings that potentially could stay empty for many, many years because they're generating some revenue as opposed to making an economic development into the building.
Then it's just like a billboard on a vacant lot.
Right.
This, there's, of course, tremendous economic value in the gaming license so that you would hardly, I would think, retain a large building with a gaming license just for the sake of the transparent wrap.
I highly doubt, highly doubt somebody would leave the Lady Luck or the Queen Hearts vacant just to wrap it.
And, and that's why, if you don't wish any changes, we can, well, we have brought it back then. If that is not a concern, then the, then staff would request your recommendation of approval, as is, with the correction of extra E.
Okay, well, let me finish asking my questions if I could.
Okay, I'm sorry, certainly.
I'm, I'm still a little confused because when it first came forward, I know some of us had some concerns that since we can't regulate the content of advertising, that it opened the door for a Pandora's box, if you will. And I thought that we went back and revised it to where it was more palatable. And I'm assuming that we voted on it, and quite frankly, I can't remember how I voted, but it seems to me that the revision from our first discussion was a whole lot better. And in the current submittal allows a non-occupied... One more time. I'm sorry.
A casino, a vacant casino could be wrapped. A vacant office building could not. An occupied office building could.
What constitutes a vacant casino?
A casino that isn't operational.
Well, if it doesn't have a license, is it still a casino?
Yes.
It is?
Yes, the non-gaming stays with the, the site.
Land?
Yes, yes. And then they do the one-day open thing if they need to.
That's, that's good, pretty tech.
It's just like, what do I want, the former showboat, castaways?
Yeah.
Like that. Move on, ruse.
And my original, my original concerns were that we're trying to raise the bar on architecture, particularly downtown with the sixty-one acres. And I'm just a little concerned about our inability to be able to control the aesthetics of some of these wraps. The ones I've seen on the strip seem pretty okay to me, but if we can't regulate the content, I think we're opening ourselves up for a lot of grief.
You can, again, we can, we can dictate the quality of the material, the fabric, how it's attached to the building to assure it's not moving around, but we cannot control the content.
Seeing no more comments or questions, we'll entertain a motion on item thirty-eight.
Do we, okay.
Could we just clarify? When we're talking about, we're talking properties in the gaming overlay?
The downtown, yes. The casino, downtown casino overlay district.
Okay. Does this, does this potentially negate some of the controls under the scenic byway overlay?
No.
And are we replacing, taking out one of the Es?
We certainly are.
In two places, two places.
Actually, I found three already.
Oh, have you found three? I didn't find them all three.
Are we ready for a motion on this item?
Yeah. I'll move for approval of, what are we, TXT two-six-six-five-one?
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. We're gonna go back to item thirty.
That'll go forward to council and ordinance forum. Thank you.
Item thirty, SUP two-seven-nine-three-three, applicant owner Hector Camacho for a proposed restaurant with a service bar with waivers to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a childcare facility and to allow a fifty-eight-foot distance separation from a school where four hundred feet is required at four-five-six-one East Bonanza. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff is unable to support the requested waivers and finds the use not compatible with those protected uses and is recommending denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Yes, Hector Camacho, fifteen oh-one, South Marina Parkway.
Okay. Would you like to tell us what you're asking for?
Well, I asked him for a service bar because I believe it's a need to support the business and allocation. And I believe to be with eight different restaurants without liquor and I think it's going to be a failure. And you open after five o'clock and we can't. So I don't think that's covered, that's, any problem you got with the school hours.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it. I just hope, you know, it can be approved.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to come speak for this item or against it? Please come forward.
My name is Kit Ryrie, forty-six oh-four, Julian Court. And several years ago, not necessarily the owner, but the same location requested to have a bar and it was denied. It's right next door to Childcare Center, across the street from Albert Edwards Junior Elementary School. And I feel having a bar that close, whether, no matter what time it is, and children possibly present, children there in the evening at activities, people drinking and maybe co-mingling there, that that is not appropriate. The city has a law already against that and I feel that it should be denied for that.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, my name is Marv Del Ryrie, forty-six oh-four, Julian Court. Our daughter just moved in next door. She's got kids. They're gonna be going to Albert Edwards.
Okay.
Our neighbors, they've got kids. We know neighbors on most all the other streets there because we've been there about twenty years.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't agree at all that they should have a bar there. I think there's plenty of people that do have restaurants that can coincide without a bar. And like my husband said, I, you know, there's already a law in effect that there should be no liquor around where the children are. And they do have many activities at night because I've seen them there. And we live just over our fence. We can hear them when they have their, when they have, when they have their parents come and meet the teachers and when they have their field days and, and when they have their, you know, like when their party's in the afternoon or they have Halloween parties, they always have them in the afternoon and evening. And we both seriously deny this.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do you want to comment?
I believe kit is all over, all over Las Vegas where other bars and I don't think it'd be any problem because a service bar is completely different for a full bar. You serve the liquor or margarita because you're going to be something different ever done in Vegas. It's something that you go into California and Arizona, you see a place like this on the weekend. It's not just for the Latinos, for the complete public. You're going to be mariachis and it's going to be different. I'd be international food. You're going to be, I guess, eight different type of restaurant. It's a, it's a complete family-oriented. It's not a, it's like I said, it's not a full bar. You're going to be closing regular hours, like in the weekend, like in any restaurant, ten, eleven, maybe it's a party twelve, but during the week, nine o'clock. And like I said, it's not, it's not a place you're going to serve a lot of liquor because I own a license already before. The city issued a license right next to the church and we never have any problems, said or complained because I serve the meal, I mean, the liquor with the meal. And it's going to be, like I said, complete family-oriented. That's the only thing I believe in.
Okay, thank you. Comments and questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I, I understand what the applicant's saying, but this elementary school has got a significant population. It's directly adjacent to it. And if it's like several elementary schools, kids walk to and from school, I just, I can't support this item.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions from the board?
They sell liquor right across the street. If you don't want to go for a liquor right across, across the street in the shopping center, it's a, it's a liquor store.
Okay, thank you. We'll entertain a motion on item thirty, please. Staff recommendation is for denial.
I make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for denial of SUP two-seven-nine-three-three for all the reasons stated.
There is a motion on, there is a motion on the floor for denial. I just want to put on record, a gentleman named Fritz, who owns the daycare center, did fax me a, a letter of opposition, so I did want to put that on the record as well. Okay? There is a motion on the floor for denial of item thirty. Please cast your votes. And that motion for denial has passed.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal to the office of the city clerk within ten days.
I want to go straight to the city council.
Mr. Jim?
No, sir, you need to appeal it.
I need to appeal it?
Yes, for it to go to the city council.
Okay.
Okay, you got ten days, okay.
Item thirty-nine, citizens' participation. Citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record, the amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time. Any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. This meeting has been adjourned.
Carrie, see, it's all under. Carrie, under.
Under.